Thank you, Chairman Burgess, Ranking Member McGovern. I urge the Rules Committee to grant a prompt rule for the House's consideration of House Joint Resolution 42, a resolution disapproving of the District Columbia Council's Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act of 2022. The men and women of the Metropolitan Police Department serve their community every day to help keep the district safe and secure. In doing so, they routinely place themselves in dangerous situations to protect others. And yet, progressive policies from the D.C. Council continue to hamstring district officers and needlessly place them in unsafe situations. The D.C. Council's Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act of 2022 does just that. For example, it requires burdensome and time-consuming approval hurdles before officers may put on riot gear for their own protection. It creates new mechanisms for activists to harass officers and their families by obtaining personal information on the officers. It also creates additional liability for officers that are not found in other police departments. These are just a few of the many impractical and outrageous proposals of this legislation. The D.C. Police Department has seen over 1,190 officers leave the force since the beginning of 2020. That's about one-third of the police department. One-third is left since the beginning of 2020. Nearly 40% of those officers resigned. That means they chose to leave the department instead of dealing with the increasingly impossible burdens placed on them by the D.C. Council. Since then, crime has been soaring in the district. Compared to this time last year, homicides are up 31%, motor vehicle theft is up 108%, all crime is up 24%. These troubling statistics cannot be allowed to continue. The Council has continued to overlook its law enforcement officers in favor of progressive, soft-on-crime policies that only benefit criminals. The 671,000 residents of Washington, D.C., and approximately 20 million annual visitors to our nation's capital deserve to feel safe. Ensuring a vibrant and safe national capital for all Americans to visit is a key ingredient of the district's future financial health and a necessity for the federal government workforce. And our police deserve to have the resources to ensure safety for all. The D.C. Council's Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act does neither of those things. If the D.C. Council wants to continue down this path, they will have to answer to this Congress, and we are not alone. The D.C. Police Union, representing 3,500 members, and the U.S. Capitol Police Labor Committee have both endorsed this resolution of disapproval. D.C.'s reckless reforms have also caught nationwide attention with the National Fraternal Order of Police and the National Association of Police Organizations, both asking Congress to block the D.C. reform package. Additionally, the California Coalition of Law Enforcement Associations, the Fullerton Police Officers Association, the Las Vegas Police Protective Association are all strongly in favor of H.J. Resolution 42. We see such broad national support for this disapproval resolution because other jurisdictions know just how awful the D.C. Council's anti-policing so-called reforms would be as a precedent for America's cities. Additionally, D.C. Mayor Muriel Bowser declined to sign this legislation into law. That should be a signal of how extreme it is. But the D.C. Council did not listen and proceeded to pass it anyway. We also have recent precedent to consider. Recently, Mr. Chairman, 31 House Democrats and 31 Senate Democrats joined President Biden and House Republicans to block D.C. Council's Revised Criminal Code Act of 2022 from becoming law. Congress successfully blocked the district's attempt to lessen penalties on dangerous criminals, and now we must act again to address the D.C. Council's reckless attempt to weaken local law enforcement. The dangerous policing reforms addressed by H.J. Resolution 42 are even worse for the current crime epidemic in D.C. We must ensure that these pro-crime policies are not allowed in our nation's capital city, which Congress and its representatives from all over the nation has a special interest in overseeing. If the D.C. Council wishes to engage Congress to seek reforms addressing specific problems in local law enforcement, then the Oversight Committee stands ready to have those conversations with D.C. leaders and Ranking Member Raskin. But this police reform package, which D.C. has presented to Congress for approval, does far more harm than good and must be rejected. And to be clear, this is precisely the role of Congress when it comes to matters of the district's governance. Under U.S. Constitution, Congress has granted exclusive legislation in all cases whatsoever over the district. And the Home Rule Act, while establishing a degree of local governance, is a legislative creation of Congress that we have a duty to oversee and reform if necessary. Under the Home Rule Act, Congress maintains a role to scrutinize and approve of district legislation. Just because Congress has not been fulfilling this role in recent decades is not a reason to avoid this responsibility now, especially when we know the nation's capital city is plunging into a crime crisis. Now is the time for Congress to lean in and provide the oversight the district so badly needs. Again, Mr. Chairman, I ask the Rules Committee to grant a prompt rule for the House's consideration of this resolution, and I welcome the committee's questions. I yield back.
Chair, thanks, Chairman, and thank you for your thoughtful testimonies. Chair recognizes Mr. Raskin, a former member of this committee, and welcome back, sir. You're always welcome.
Well, thank you kindly, Mr. Burgess. Good to see you. And Mr. McGovern, good to see you. And always good to see you, Mr. Chairman. And I do want to extend my sympathy to you after the recent massacre of six people at a bank in Kentucky, which is a catastrophe I know we're going to mark on the floor this evening. So, H.J. Res. 42 seeks to nullify a law that was passed unanimously by the Council of the District of Columbia to promote accountability for police officers who use excessive force or abuse their power, a goal that most Americans share. To respond to the good chairman's only real reference to the D.C. government, it is true that Mayor Bowser allowed the law or allowed the legislation to pass into law without signing it, but that's totally within her power to do so, and she's allowed hundreds of laws to come into being in exactly that way. I looked at that question today. In any event, Mayor Bowser has written a letter to the Congress of the United States with the Chairman of the City Council, Mr. Mendelson, opposing this disapproval resolution and asking Congress to respect the political autonomy of the D.C. Council and the mayor and the local government. So what does the legislation actually do? Well, it bans the use of chokeholds and other dangerous neck restraints. It sets reasonable standards for the use of deadly force by police across the board. It requires public release of body-worn camera footage and creates a police officer misconduct database, but only for officers who've been convicted of a crime or where allegations have been administratively sustained by a trial board within the Metropolitan Police Department. It prohibits D.C. from hiring police officers who've engaged in prior criminal or official misconduct. And most importantly, the new law empowers the chief of police to fire or punish officers who break the law by removing police disciplinary matters from the zone of collective bargaining. And this is really what all of this is about, is a matter of political controversy. This is the provision that galvanized opposition to the bill, the key provision that now leads our friends wanting to convert the Congress of the United States of America into a 535-person super-city council exercising close review of the work of the 13-member Council of the District of Columbia. Bottom line, the local police union hates this provision, which is their right, of course, and their chief has been the chief lobbyist against D.C. on this bill. He was the key GOP witness in the Oversight Hearing on the legislation. His union sued when the reform legislation was first passed, asserting that it that by removing police discipline from collective bargaining, it violated the U.S. Constitution. But they lost in the U.S. District Court for the District of Columbia. They lost in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia, and the Supreme Court did not grant cert. In other words, they've lost every step along the way. Well, now, in their haste to kick around the congressionally unrepresented people of Washington, D.C., our GOP colleagues are suddenly embracing a claim that puts them in favor of an extreme police-union position on discipline that jurisdictions across America are debating and doing away with. Why? Well, Washington itself is a good example. The Metropolitan Police Department has been forced, under the old law, by labor arbitrators to rehire a significant number of officers who'd been fired for engaging in serious criminal misconduct. Here are some examples of the officers who were fired for misconduct, but the department was forced to reinstate by an arbitrator under the law replaced by this one, which now our colleagues propose to repeal. One police officer illegally struck a suspect multiple times in the head. The officer was tried and convicted in court of criminal assault and sentenced to 30 days in jail, three years of probation, and 500 hours of community service. Despite opposition from the police chief, he was reinstated by the arbitrator. Another case: An off-duty police officer sexually assaulted a woman and was convicted of misdemeanor sex abuse and sentenced to a 100-day suspended sentence and a year of probation. Despite strong opposition from the police department, he was reinstated at the force. Another off-duty cop confessed to abusing a child. The officer was convicted of child abuse and sentenced to five years of probation. Despite opposition from the department and the police chief, he was reinstated at the force. Every D.C. police chief for the last 25 years has expressed outrage about having to rehire bad cops after they've been fired for perpetrating serious misconduct against citizens. Former D.C. Police Chief Peter Newsom openly lamented that he had to allow, quote, "very bad police officers back onto our department." Former Police Chief Charles Ramsey also rejected the practice, saying it is demoralizing to the rank-and-file, who really do not want to have those kinds of people in their ranks. It causes a tremendous amount of anxiety in the public. Our credibility is shot whenever these things happen. Current D.C. Police Chief Robert Conti makes the essential point that taking individual disciplinary matters out of the labor arbitration process will help reduce the risk of returning poor performers back to the force. So forcing police chiefs to reinstate bad cops fired for breaking the law is bad for public safety, bad for community trust, and bad for morale among the vast majority of good officers who are doing their jobs. It's also clearly bad for taxpayers. Between 2010 and 2020, The Washington Post found that D.C. had paid out $91 million to resolve claims of police brutality and misconduct. But taxpayers are not only footing the bill for these shadowy settlements that are taking place, they're on the hook, under the old law, for the back pay paid out to bad cops who were fired for their misconduct but then rehired because of arbitration. In a recent five-year period, the Metropolitan Police Department was forced to rehire 36 officers. According to a 2022 report from the D.C. Auditor, D.C. had to pay $14.3 million in back pay to these officers that the police chief wanted to get rid of. Look, this personnel policy is a matter for local decision-making in Washington, as in every other jurisdiction in the country. 700,000 taxpaying American citizens, and they're paying more taxes per capita than anybody that we represent, than the people of 50 states. And they're paying more in hard taxes than dozens of states, okay? But these people have decided through their elected representatives that the chief of police, who's appointed by the mayor, should be able to discipline bad actors in the police department. So reversing the D.C. government on this local matter now, with the air filled with TV ads paid for by the police union, is simply outrageous interference by Congress to impose a bad public policy on the capital city. And if you don't trust Democrats on the issue, listen to some Republicans. In 2021, Republican staff on the Congressional Joint Economic Committee issued a report making the case for giving police chiefs and departments control over internal discipline instead of handing it over to labor arbitrators. But whichever way you come down on that, leave it up to the jurisdiction itself. The D.C. Police Reform Law is common sense reform, which enjoys strong public support. It is congruent not only with the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act, which passed the House in the 117th Congress, and indeed went much further than D.C. did in getting rid of qualified immunity in court, but it is also consistent with police accountability laws that have been enacted across the country by dozens of states and localities in the wake of notorious episodes of police brutality like the murder of George Floyd. For example, since 2020, at least 24 states have enacted legislation to limit the use of dangerous neck restraints against citizens, which is how the D.C. law begins. 39 states have passed reforms related to officer education and training requirements. 26 have enacted laws to improve relevant police data collection and increase transparency in policing, which is an important part of the D.C. effort. At least seven states, including Arizona, Colorado, and Wisconsin, have enacted legislation requiring the creation of public databases on use of form-force information, and so on. At least 20 states have passed laws that address state-level use of force standards. This resolution of disapproval is an attack on local decision-making, on federalism, and the policies of oversight and accountability that Americans clearly want and that our committee should be the ones championing. This resolution would result not only in less political democracy, but less official oversight over policing in Washington. It's amazing to me that our colleagues will not even conduct one hearing on the desire of 700,000 taxpaying Americans to join the union as a state, but they will mobilize all their energy to strip from the local police chief the power to discipline cops who commit crimes because the local union wants to maintain the arbitration process. You know, there seems to be no end to our colleagues' willingness to undermine good police work in D.C. Last month, and the most memorable thing they've done so far in the new Congress, they went and visited more than 20 January 6th insurrectionists in D.C. jail, the vast majority of whom are there because they were convicted of or charged with violently assaulting police officers. And not just Capitol officers, but Metropolitan Police Department officers, too. And some of our colleagues, certainly not the chairman, likened the extremists who attacked our officers to political prisoners, comparing them essentially to Nelson Mandela and Alexei Navalny and Alexander Solzhenitsyn, people in authoritarian states in jail for ideological offenses. Alexei Navalny never took a baseball bat to the head of a police officer or hit one over the head with a flag. Well, now, they want to overturn a local law that allows the chief of police to keep cops who commit crimes like drug dealing or sex assault off the police force. I do not blame the aggrieved people of Washington for telling House Republicans to just keep their hands off of D.C. I yield back.
Chair, thanks, gentlemen. Chair, thanks both our witnesses. Chairman Comer, let me just ask you briefly, do you have any ideas to what the recruitment and retention has been a problem on the D.C. police force?
It's been a huge problem. And, you know, one of the problems that the police union and the police chief and others have said is the D.C. Council and their excessive efforts to reform criminal justice and tie the hands of the police and make policing more bureaucratic and give police officers private information out, to put their lives more at risk. And this isn't what police officers want, and that's why they've had such a high turnover. And there's a direct correlation between a high turnover rate of police and high crime.
Well, I thank you for your work on this. In the interest of time, I'm going to forego any other questions. I'll recognize the Ranking Member of the Rules Committee.
Well, thank you very much. So, I mean, this whole afternoon in the Rules Committee has been kind of a waste of time. And I welcome both of you here today, but this bill is not going to go anywhere. I want to submit the statement of administration policy that says the president would veto this bill. And, you know, if you were here before, we spent three hours dealing with the bill that kind of illustrates Republicans' kind of creepy obsession with trans individuals, which is three hours of my life I don't think I'll ever get back. But let me just say, did any of you know what state has the highest per capita murder rate based on CDC and FBI data? It's Mississippi. You know what the second state is? Louisiana. The third state? Any guesses? It's Kentucky. Fourth, Alabama. Fifth, Missouri. Sixth, South Carolina. I mean, do we see any pattern here? Are those predominantly democratically or Republican-controlled states? Any guess?
Well, more relevantly, those are states that have the weakest gun laws in the country, but that corresponds to the political dimension you've invoked.
And the truth is that the murder rates in 25 states that Republicans carried in the 2020 presidential election are 40% higher than in the states that Democrats won. You know, we want to talk about crime. I mean, we ought to be talking about guns, but with the majority that we have in the House, you can't even raise the issue. But, you know, we have, you know, gun violence now is the leading cause of death for children and teens in this country, more than car crashes, more than cancer. We have kids terrified to go to school, wondering whether they're going to be next. And instead of doing anything to deal with the reality, we have bills that, you know, are dealing with a narrative out there that is not true. And, you know, the bill that Republicans, you know, are presenting, essentially, if they get their way, would ease up on officers with misconduct records, would make it more difficult for the public to view body cam footage, would allow police to use chokeholds and other deadly uses of force, even in cases where it's not absolutely necessary. And I, you know, and I, again, I pointed out earlier that one of the most, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report, the Speaker McCarthy's hometown of Bakersfield in California is the fourth most dangerous place to live in the United States. I mean, I sometimes think we're in the Twilight Zone here, where we're talking about things that have nothing to do with the realities that are in this country, the fact that we can't deal with, you know, gun safety and gun control legislation when people are being massacred on a daily basis. So, you know, I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. President?
No, I appreciate that very much, Mr. McGovern, and I share your frustration about it. I mean, I don't think you take any joy or any of us take any joy in pointing out how high the murder rate is in other states compared to our own or compared to Washington, D.C. The point is, we shouldn't, this, and I was listening to your discussion before about athletics, this is not an athletic competition to see who can either have the higher or the lower murder rate. We should be working for nationwide solutions on this, which is why we have been advocating a universal violent criminal background check, which is supported by more than 90% of American people, the vast majority of everybody on the majority side, on the minority side, independents, everybody supports that. And they can't understand why Congress won't move. I saw one of the girls in Tennessee holding a sign saying, "If I get killed at school in a mass shooting, bury me on the steps of the U.S. Capitol." It was chilling to see that. But she was expressing her frustration about our inability to have even a conversation about this, to see what we can move forward.
I mean, I think that people, and I'm not, Democrats, Republicans, and independents, are scratching their head, wondering, like, what the hell are we doing up here? And, you know, if, you know, we have to have, I don't know how many massacres it takes before we do anything on guns, but the reality is, it is out of control. And it is unconscionable that in response to what's happening, we get this. And, you know, but any event, let me end on a positive note. I know it's Mr. Rushenthal's birthday, and so I will wish you a happy birthday. But I think, I mean, it's frustrating that we're here wasting our time when people expect us to actually get stuff done, but I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Chair, thanks, gentlemen. Chair yields to the gentleman from Pennsylvania.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And for the sake of time, I'm going to go ahead and yield back. Any more, please?
Gentleman yields. Gentleman deals back. Chair recognizes the gentlelady from Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've had this debate before. I think it's wrong that Congress is trying to overturn the will of the 700,000 people who live in the District of Columbia and have expressed their desires with respect to holding accountable police officers who abuse force, et cetera. I think that's a completely reasonable thing for a local government to do. I think the members here would be more than a little upset if Congress were to come in and start overturning the local decisions of the governments, the municipalities in their districts. And I just think this is a really, really wrong thing to do. So, was there something you wanted to add, Mr. Raskin?
Well, I would just add to your last point, Miss Galen, that a lot of us were state legislators before we came here, and it would be as if the state decided that it would start reviewing all of the legislation from the local, from the capital city and micromanaging the capital city. I know that would not be well tolerated in my state, especially if we disenfranchise them, too. So that's what we're talking about, and I think there should be some respect for the political rights of the people who live in Washington and actually have to make these decisions instead of making a political football. As, you know, Mr. McGovern says, there are serious questions facing us about the crisis in gun violence across the country. We wake up every single day to another mass shooting. I saw in the commercial that the D.C. Police Union is running on behalf of this bill that they cite a mass shooting in D.C., which is as much a nightmare in D.C. as it is anywhere else in the country, but this legislation is not going to do anything to stop gun massacres across the country. There, we would have to pick up the almost unmentionable topic of an assault weapon ban to our colleagues. But certainly, we can at least get to a universal violent criminal background check and close the loopholes in the Brady Law. But instead, we're consumed with, you know, bills at this level, which, as Mr. McGovern points out, are not going anywhere anyway, and everybody understands that.
Okay. Thank you. I yield back.
Gentlelady yields back. Chair, thanks, gentlelady. The chair recognizes the gentlelady from Minnesota.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just so you know, this bill in particular gave me, was given new meaning to me over the weekend, and very significant. This is Deputy Josh Owen. He was a military veteran, a loving husband and father. Deputy Owen was with the Pope County Sheriff's Office in my district for 12 years. Over the weekend, he and two other officers responded to a domestic dispute call. They attempted to make an arrest, but Deputy Owen was killed in the line of duty. And I hate to say it, it was his 44th birthday. There are thousands of Deputy Owens across the country, including in D.C. They put their lives on the line every single day, whether through a routine traffic stop or an incident response. This attack on law enforcement has very real consequences, and it has to stop. According to the Fraternal Order of Police, violent incidences this year against officers are up more than 50% from pre-pandemic levels. We have a serious anti-law enforcement disease that is spreading in this country, and this D.C. law only fans the flames of that misguided and dangerous sentiment, sentiment that, when perpetuated by criminals, has deadly consequences. I look forward to supporting this rule, Mr. Chair, and the underlying bill on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I yield back.
Chair, thanks, gentlelady, and thank you for sharing that very poignant story with us. Chair recognizes the gentlelady from New Mexico.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I think that the sadness that Representative Fishback brought up with regards to the deputy who lost his life, and I've spent quite a bit of time while I was home with police officers and first responders. I'd like to also point out, though, that last year, in the fiscal year '23 appropriations, Democrats supported and passed a bill that had significant resources targeted to law enforcement. We did $4.4 billion, an increase of $506 million for law enforcement. That included everything from community-oriented policing to second-chance programs, money to address sexual assault kills, since those were not being dead. You know, in that bill, 216 Democrats supported it, and almost every Republican opposed supporting additional funding for law enforcement. That's what it means to support law enforcement, is to actually give them the funding and the support that they need to do their job. What this bill does, though, is take away the ability of the, a local jurisdiction to decide for itself what decide for itself what it needs to do. And it is once again, as you pointed out, ranking member, another kind of waste of time when there is so much more that our constituents want us to do. Thank you for raising the issues with regards to gun violence. You know, as we were discussing the fact that we are not addressing gun violence, a statistic that makes my heart cry is that right now, for every kindergarten child that is in school right now, if you go to their classroom, one of them will not live to adulthood. I've been in those classrooms, where because we failed to address the scourge of gun violence, the fact that it is the greatest killer of all children, that I have walked into those classrooms, which child? Which child is not going to make it because we failed to address gun violence? That's what's important to do, not interfere with local governments. Chair Comer, thank you very much for, when you were here last, for our discussion with regards to local control. And as you know, I am, you know, I hold Kentucky now very close to my heart, and I'm so sad of what happened there. I'm so sad because it just reverberates through that community. But I do want Chairman Comer, and I don't, this is a bad time to put you on the spot, but you did recognize that local control is best, that you would not want Congress to be talking about what is best in any of your Kentucky towns, right? That those need to make those decisions themselves. Would you still agree to that, that local control of these issues?
I agree, local control is best, but we have a constitutional obligation to oversee and be the check and balance for the Districts of Columbia, and we have a crime problem here. We have our police officers begging us for help, and, look, the arguments that have been made, that this bill isn't going to go anywhere, the president's going to veto it, with all due respect, the president said that on the last disapproval of resolution. And 31 Democrats supported it on the floor in the House and 31 Democrats in the Senate. So, and then Joe Biden signed it, and I feel that this could be déjà vu all over again. We have a crime crisis in America. You know, we have people on the other side of the aisle that are all over the board on funding or defunding the police. At the end of the day, this is something our police are begging for, and, look, I'm all about holding people accountable, and they're, you know, 100% of the resolution wasn't bad, but the overwhelming majority of it was bad. I want to hold bad government employees accountable. We argue all the time in the Oversight Committee. I feel like Mr. Connolly, Mr. Ashton spent a lot of their time defending poor performers in the federal workforce, so we're, you know, I'm all about terminating poor performers. But at the end of the day, the good, the bad in this bill significantly outweighs the good, and I think that, you know, with respect to wasting time, one of the biggest issues in America, and it's a bipartisan issue, is crime. And this is the poster child for crime in Washington, D.C. We can do something about it, and H.J. Resolution 42 is a step in the right direction.
I will yield to...
Just for the record, in the last staff, the president did not say he would veto the bill.
I'm sorry?
The president did not say he would veto the bill in the previous example.
I thought he was, it was my understanding that he said he was opposed to the bill. I think we said that in the Rules Committee. I think you said that in the Rules Committee.
He did not say he would veto it.
But he signed it.
Okay.
So, for the record, we did receive...
Oh, okay.
All right. For the sake of accuracy.
Okay.
So, for the record, we did receive a veto, and ranking member, Raskin, would you like to address?
Thank you, Ms. Lillard.
That's what he said the last time, too, though.
No, he did not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I must have misunderstood.
No, no, thank you for that correction, because I know he never said he was going to veto it, but he has said repeatedly he will veto this legislation. But, so, my good friend from Kentucky, I invoke the specter of defund the police. You know, I've never heard a member of our committee, this committee, any committee, talk about defunding the police, although we have a number of members of the committee on Chairman Comer's side who now talk openly about defunding the FBI and defunding the ATF. And that's not a position...
Defunding certain people at the top, fat cats at the top that aren't complying with the Constitution, that are weaponizing the federal government.
Are you agreeing with defunding?
Just one or two bad apples, holding bad apples accountable.
Yeah, I never quite heard that reservation or caveat to it. They are saying it's time to defund the FBI and defund the ATF. So, if you're interested in defunding any law enforcement units, including America's National Law Enforcement Agency and the FBI, it's the other party you'll be looking to. Don't go to the Democratic Party, because nobody's interested in that.
Right, and that's what the appropriations bills are about. We have actually supported funding the police. We have increased funding for the police, and that is where it is. The budget reflects your values, and we funded the police. So, I'm going to go ahead and move on, because we want to get down to vote, but I'd also point out that many of the pieces that we see in this D.C. law are actually enacted in many jurisdictions, such as prohibiting the use of neck restraints, which Texas provides. So, there are numerous aspects of this, which are consistent with jurisdictions, both where Republicans lead and Democrats lead, and with that, I will yield back.
The gentlelady yields back. Chair, thanks, the gentlelady. Chair recognizes the gentleman from South Carolina.
For the sake of time, you know, I'm so tired of hearing anti-police rhetoric. A guy just gave me a list, I'm not going to recite the names, y'all are taking the, y'all are taking the support for the criminal rather than the police officer. And I just, you know, and to keep saying gun violence is like saying airplane violence that crashed into 9/11. It's people that fire, it's mentally ill people that fire the guns, not gun violence. Guns don't jump up and all of a sudden shoot people. Jamie, I appreciate y'all, this rule, I think it's a good one, and for the sake of time, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Chair, thanks, gentlemen, and recognizes the gentlelady from Indiana.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess, Chairman Burgess. Chair Comer, ranking member Raskin, thank you for speaking with us today. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start by requesting unanimous consent to submit several letters of support for H.J. Res. 42 from police organizations to the record, one from the National Fraternal Order of Police, one from the National Association of Police Organizations, one from the United States Capitol Police Labor Committee, and finally, one from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Attorney General.
Without objections, so ordered.
In this, it is this last letter from Virginia's Attorney General, I think, that makes an important point, quoting directly from the letter, "Unfortunately, due to the proximity of our communities, D.C.'s crime problem has become Virginia's problem. What happens in the nation's capital certainly has consequences for neighboring communities, but I would also argue it has consequences across the country. Chairman Comer, we often hear from the other side of the aisle that we should allow D.C. government to take decisions with respect to local police and stay out of it." Does hearing from Virginia's Attorney General inform your thinking on this question?
Yeah, I think that what happens in Washington, D.C. certainly affects Virginia and Maryland as well. We have crime spilling over into other cities, other states. This is, from the two weeks I was home, and I'm sure it wasn't any different in Indiana, when you listen to people's concerns, crime is a top-five issue, and what are you going to do about it? And what I think a lot of police forces and a lot of attorneys general all around the United States are concerned that if D.C. sets a precedent here, is this going to spread to other blue cities? Is this going to spread to Chicago? Is this going to spread to Portland? Is this going to spread to New York City? Other cities that have really high crime rates. So, I think it's important that we listen to our frontline soldiers, listen to our law enforcement officials, not only the police, but our prosecute, our good prosecutors, our hard-on-crime and hard-on-criminal prosecutors, and our attorneys general, who are serious about reducing crime.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Comer. As I mentioned from the previous hearing on D.C. city government crime actions, millions of visitors from all of our districts visit Washington, D.C. annually. As representatives who have a responsibility to review the actions of the D.C. government, it would be a dereliction of duty not to consider the safety of our constituents when they visit the nation's capital. And that's why these letters from both national and local law enforcement organizations are so compelling. Thank you for the time. I yield back my balance, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen from New Yorks, recognize for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chairman Comer and ranking member Raskin, for being back here with us today. Chairman Comer, as you know, the Biden administration recently released a statement threatening to veto this resolution, claiming that the D.C. Council's act in question contains common-sense police reforms. Mr. Chairman, is there anything else that you would like to say in response to this threat and to these claims?
Nothing that I haven't already said. I appreciate the opportunity. I think that we went through this, maybe not a full-blown veto threat, but he certainly expressed his opposition to the last disapproval, resolution of disapproval. So, I think that once the American people learn about this bill, learn what this bill does, what this bill prevents, I think there'll be a groundswell of support like there was the last time, and I think you'll see a significant number of Democrats on the House floor vote for this bill, just like they did the last time, and I think the same thing will happen in the U.S. Senate.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Comer, and we just have to move on from this, if only, or it should be, or I wish it was, arguments about D.C. status as a federal district, and that's not what this resolution is about. We all know that. Congress has clear authority to act as a check on the actions of D.C. government. This is not a states' rights issue or a local authority issue. This is a matter pertaining to the country's sole federal district, a federal district that receives millions of visitors from around the country who want to see their nation's capital. They want to visit their member of Congress. They want to experience American history firsthand, a federal district with a population of 3/4 of a million residents who want to live in a healthy, safe, and full life and have a city that they can be safe in, a federal district whose leadership has since 2020 made it their mission to defund the police and to turn the justice system into a revolving door, pulling the ripcord on violent crime. And as a member of the House Oversight and Accountability Committee, I was present to ask questions of the leadership of the D.C. Council on their efforts to loosen the district's criminal code, and it was shameful to see how the leadership of our nation's capital effectively shrugged their shoulders at the alarming spikes in violent crime sweeping across the district. D.C. residents are fed up, Americans are fed up, visitors to our nation's capital are fed up. So, I thank you very much for being here. I look forward to supporting this resolution and rule, and, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for appearing before us today, and the witnesses are excused.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I ask unanimous consent to insert into the record a statement by Representative Becca Ballant for her Amendment Number 4 to H.R. 734, and a statement by Representative Sheila Jackson Lee on her Amendment Number 18 to H.R. 734.
Without objection. Is there anyone else seeking to testify on H.R. 734 or H.J. Res. 42? Seeing none, this closes the hearing portion. Chair will be in receipt of a motion from the gentlelady from Indiana, Ms. Houghton.
Mr. Chairman, I move the committee grant H.R. 734, the Protection of Women and Girls in Sports Act 2023, a structured rule. The rule waives all points of order against consideration of the bill. The rule provides one hour of general debate, equally divided and controlled by the chair and ranking minority member of the Committee on Education and the Workforce or their respective designees. The rule provides that an amendment in the nature of a substitute consisting of the text of Rules Committee Print 118-3 shall be considered as adopted, and the bill as amended shall be considered as read. The rule waives all points of order against the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 734, made in order as original text. The rule further makes, in order, only those amendments printed in the Rules Committee report. Each such amendment may be offered only in the order printed in the report, may be offered only by a member designated in the report, shall be considered as read, shall be debatable for a time specified in the report, equally divided and controlled by the proponent and an opponent, shall not be subject to amendment, and shall not be subject to a demand for division of the question in the House or in the committee of the whole. All points of order against the amendments are waived. The rule provides one motion to recommit. The rule further provides for consideration of H.J. Res. 42, disapproving the action of the District of Columbia Council in approving the Comprehensive Policing and Justice Reform Amendment Act of 2022 under a closed rule. The rule waives all points of order against consideration of the joint resolution. The rule provides that the joint resolution shall be considered as read. The rule waives all points of orders, order against provisions in the joint resolution. The rule provides one hour of general debate, equally divided and controlled by the chair and ranking minority member of the Committee on Oversight and Accountability or their respective designees. Finally, the rule provides that pursuant to Section 604-H of the Home Rule Act, a motion to recommit is not in order to the joint resolution if under consideration while the Act of the D.C. Council is within the congressional review period prescribed in Section 602 of such Act.
Thank you very much. You've now heard the motion. Is there any discussion or amendment to the rule?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment to the rule.
Gentlemen, ladies, recognize, present or amend.
I move the committee make in order and provide any necessary waivers for Amendment Number 5 to H.R. 734, offered by Representative Omar, which would strike the text of the bill and add a section to ensure that nothing in this act shall be construed to permit or encourage a local educational agency or school to require any student to provide reproductive or sexual health information, including information regarding the student's menstrual cycle. I yield back.
Thank you very much. Just for the purposes of the committee, the amendment was ruled non-german by the parliamentarian, so you should be aware of that. All those in favor of the gentlelady's amendment will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Pinion the chair, the ayes have it.
I would request a recorded vote.
Roll call has been requested. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess, no. Mr. Roshenthaler, no. Mrs. Fishbach, no. Mr. Massey, no. Mr. Norman, no. Mr. Roy, Mrs. Houghton. Mrs. Houghton, no. Mr. Langworthy, no. Mr. McGovern.
Aye.
Mr. McGovern, aye. Ms. Scanlon.
Aye.
Ms. Scanlon, aye. Mr. Nagus. Ms. Ledger Fernandez.
Aye.
Ms. Ledger Fernandez, aye. Mr. Chairman.
No.
Mr. Chairman, no.
Clerk will tally, clerk will report the total?
Three ayes, eight nays.
Amendment is not agreed to. Is there any further amendment for discussion? Seeing that there's none, no further amendments. The question's on the motion to report. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
Pinion the chair, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, we have to ask for a recorded vote.
Roll call has been requested. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess, aye. Mr. Roshenthaler, aye. Mr. Roshenthaler, aye. Mrs. Fishbach, aye. Mrs. Fishbach, aye. Mr. Massey, aye. Mr. Massey, aye. Mr. Norman, aye. Mr. Roy, Mrs. Houghton.
Aye.
Mrs. Houghton, aye. Mr. Langworthy, aye. Mr. McGovern, no.
No.
Mr. McGovern, no. Ms. Scanlon, no. Ms. Scanlon, no. Mr. Nagus. Ms. Ledger Fernandez, no. Ms. Ledger Fernandez, no. Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, aye.
Clerk will report the total?
Eight ayes, three nays.
And the ayes have it. The motion to report is agreed to. Accordingly, Ms. Houghton of Indiana will be managing for the majority.
Ms. Ledger Fernandez for the Democrats.
It will be a spirited debate. With that, the hearing's closed.